Okay, it's now six o'clock and I'll call the special committee of the whole meeting to order. And I would like to declare that all members of council are present for this meeting. And we'll move on to the agenda. Is there any additions to the agenda? Counselor Packford, Deputy Mayor Packford, my apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move a motion forward that we as a council offer our condolences to former Fire Chief Jim Franny of Elsford, who passed away yesterday.
Okay, thank you. And we have a second for that, seconded by Counselor Hiltz. Any further discussion on that? Okay, we'll add that under as number... Why don't we make that A, B, and we'll make the comments from the public 8A. And then we'll make the deputy mayor's recommendation 8B, if that's okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please. Aye? Or, I'm sorry, please press your button. I'm still in the old school. Take me a while. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. All right, we'll move on. And then with the addition to the agenda, would somebody like to move approval of the agenda now? Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Harding. And if... We'll ask everyone to press their button. Okay, motion to approve the agenda is amended. Approved. All right, so now we're number three. Is there any counselors feel that they have a conflict of interest on any of the issues that we're dealing with tonight? Seeing that no counselor has indicated they have a conflict of interest, we will move on to the department presentations. And 4A, Office of the Deputy CAO, being presented by Rob.
Thank you, Mayor Corcoran. Good evening, council. So tonight, we're going to go through, again, continuing some of the orientation for council. And I'm going to start with having a brief discussion about my department, so the Department of the Deputy CAO. And I forgot to put a date in, but it is today. So the roles of the Office of the Deputy CAO kind of come into three different buckets. First one being community development, and I'm going to explain each of these a little bit more. And a number of these things that we'll be talking about tonight, there will be additional presentations coming up in the coming weeks. So community development, which comprises recreation and diversity, all of the human resource management components, economic development, grants, and communications. So I know this is probably a little hard to see, but this is our organizational chart in our department. So we have two managers in this department. So Kathy Nichols, who's the manager of Human Resources, who I believe you all met. And also, we have an administrative assistant, Joanna McGrath, who provides mainly support on the HR side, but also a bit to the department as well. The other manager within our department is Brittany Trainer, who is the manager of community development, and again, is responsible for all the diversity and recreation work that we do within the municipality. And then in Brittany's division of the organization, we have two diversity specialists, Grayson Parker and Lucy O'Fory, and also Charissa Sanchez, who is on maternity leave right now, and Lucy's filling in in that position. In the recreation side of things, we have two recreation coordinators, Sean Fevens and Maria Lahoud, as well as an active living programmer, Eleanor Church, whose picture's not on there, because she just started two weeks ago. And then lots of times, in the Department of the Deputy CAO, there's kind of some other catchalls that fall under my group. So it's Communications, Ashley Thompson, our communications specialist. We also have Christine Spur, who's our business or economic development analyst, as well as Amy Johnston, who does the grants and funding administrator. And I believe all of these will have presentations coming up in the coming weeks, each of the different divisions. So the main responsibilities under the Deputy CAO role, of course, first is to support the CAO and to be the acting CAO as required, when the CAO is rarely, rarely not in his office. Of course, the HR division is a very significant portion of that. As the municipality grows and staffing grows and all that type of thing, that division requires more and more focus, which we'll talk a bit more about. The Community Development Division, again, as I mentioned, which is diversity and recreation, and then the grants, communications, economic development, as well as special projects as assigned, which you'll see as we go. So in the Human Resources Division, as I mentioned, we have Kathy Nichols, our HR manager, and Joanna McGrath, our admin assistant. And basically, they're responsible for all of the HR functions within the municipality. So currently, the municipality is sitting at about 100 employees, just shy of 100 employees within the organization, and you'll see that as we go through each of the departmental presentations where all those people are. So of course, when you have that many employees, of course, there's hiring, benefits, tracking, HR-related issues, time cards, all that type of thing. In our organization, we are a unionized environment. So of course, that means that we have union relations, negotiations, and that type of thing, collective agreement management. So all of the staff, with the exception of one individual that is not management or part of QB, which is our union that we work with very closely. And 17 management within that side. So of course, all of the HR-related policies, and then any recommendations to the CAO and then to council regarding staffing and budgeting. Within the Community Development Division, again, Brittany Trainer, the manager of community development. The primary function areas are equity, diversity, inclusion, and recreation. So again, there'll be presentations coming up within a few weeks on each of those. Three recreation staff, as I mentioned, two recreation coordinators, and one active living programmer. We have made a few tweaks in the recreation complement in the past year. We did have an MPAL position, which we've released, and now have an active living programmer. And the MPAL position is now working on trails under Brad's department. The recreation, which you'll see, there's a wide variety of recreation programming. Kings is a little bit different in terms of most municipalities when it comes to recreation, because we don't own a lot of assets. We do use the pool in Waterville at the youth facility for some programming, but a lot of our programming is done on site of other facilities, whether it's community halls, or at schools, or whatever it may be, or at the lake. On the diversity side, so their main function is the implementation of the strategy for belonging. On the equity, diversity, inclusion thing, that is an area where every municipality in the province is now required to have a plan. Kings is certainly ahead of that, because we have had a plan in place now for a couple of years and have been working towards the implementation of that strategy. And again, there'll be a presentation on the strategy for belonging in a few weeks, I think it's in December. Grants and outgoing funding. So again, Amy Johnston is our grants and funding administrator, who's been in that role for the most part for a number of years. She did take a stint in another position for a little bit and is back in this role. She does all of the administration of the community grant policy and does a very good job. The community grant policy, as you will see when we present on this, it's quite large by comparison to most municipalities, and provides a lot of opportunity for a wide variety of grants to be provided to community groups. Some of the other things that also happen, there's a bursary program, and some other funding that we provide to external organizations. So again, bursary program, recreation-related funding, school food program is another one, which we'll have to be discussing fairly soon. And then other budget line-funded organizations, and there's a number of those, which you'll see during that presentation. General timelines, just so you know, because I know I've had a few questions about grants from counselors. So Amy's going to present, again, I believe that's at the December committee of the whole meeting, just so you're aware of the programs and how they happen. And then most of the applications for grants will be completed near the end of the year, be available the first of the year. We usually do a public session for anybody that's interested in applying for grants in January. I don't think we've set the date yet, but it's usually mid to late January. And then applications usually close, most of them are April 1st, so there's a little bit of time there. But again, Amy will present all of that to you in December. On the communications side, and again, I know that we're going to do a full discussion on communications role in our policy next week at the committee of the whole meeting. But Ashley Thompson, who many of you may know from her journalist days, is our communications specialist and responsible for assisting with all of our communications needs, basically. She works closely with all departments, anytime that we need to put out releases, media relations, all that type of thing. If there's questions that we need to respond to, Ashley's the one that helps us do that. She does all of the social media management, again, which is a fairly time-consuming task. Monthly, external, and quarterly internal newsletters that get sent out, those are all electronic. And then bi-annual tax newsletters that go in tax bills. And then, of course, some other things like brand management and general marketing. Economic development is another area that falls under my department. Christine Spur is our business development or economic development analyst. So Christine's main function, we have an economic development strategy, which again, will present more information to you on that in the coming weeks. And Christine works very closely with the Valley REN, Valley Regional Enterprise Network, which will also be presenting to you in the not-too-distant future. Of course, economic development is a very broad element that we have to do within the municipality for growth. And we will talk about some of the projects that we have underway in that area. Some of the other special projects that currently fall under my purview, of course, the regional recreation complex, again, we'll be presenting on that coming up. Different aspects of fire, one of the main things that we've been working on is funding models, as well as the grants will fill discussions. We'll be talking about fire again next week on Tuesday at committee of the whole. And then one other area of note is some First Nations relations projects with the two First Nations, Glouss Cap and the Annapolis Valley First Nation. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd certainly open for questions, or we could, we have a recommendation just to receive the briefing as information.
Okay, thank you, Deputy CAO. Is there any questions to the Deputy CAO from members of council? Okay, I guess it was as clear as mud. Can we get a member of council to move receipt of the presentation, please? Moved by Counselor McPherson, seconded by Counselor Sappington. Any further discussion? We'll ask you to press your button. Okay, motion carried. Now we'll ask Director of Planning and Inspections, Trish, to come forward to make a presentation, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Welcome. Similar to the Deputy CAO, I'm going to just take a few minutes to quickly go over my team and some of the things that you'll see in the coming weeks in either further presentations or just as part of regular business. We've got a fairly diverse team within planning and inspections. It is a team of 27 with a mix of union and non-union employees. Within our department, we're divided up into three separate service deliveries. The first being inspections and enforcement, which is headed up by Terry Brown. The second division being planning, which is headed up by our manager of planning, Laura Moser. And our newest division is development services, which is headed up by Mandy Burgess. We also have an admin assistant, Loriann Clark, who really does her part in keeping us going and keeping us organized. The first division that we're going to quickly look at is the largest division within our department. It is a team of 17 positions. And it ranges from customer service, accessibility, bylaw enforcement, fire inspection, building inspection, as well as EMO. So fairly diverse. And I'll go through each of those positions very quickly. The four CSRs, those pictures are very small, I apologize. But those are the four ladies that you see out front when you come in or phone in. They are, we call them CSRs, but customer service representatives. So in this municipality, we like one-stop shopping is really the goal. So the idea behind that is come to the counter, that's going to be your point of contact initially. And those four are very good at maneuvering and figuring out what kind of inquiry is that that we're dealing with. So everything from tax payments, applying for your building permit, zoning inquiries, everything will start out there at that front counter. The main line is also answered through those four ladies out front. Building inspection, again, fairly large team, but we've got five positions for building officials, two fire inspectors. Building inspection, that is the team that are going to be looking at the enforcement and just the day-to-day implementation of the Nova Scotia Building Code Act and the regulations. So that's the tools that they'll often use, and we will. Anything with an asterisk there is identifying where we're going to have a more in-depth presentation at a later date, next week, I believe, on that. But things like building permits, inspections, cease occupancy orders, they'll issue what we call SOT, so summary offense tickets, stop work orders. But the hope is, those are the last resorts, and that it's really just inspections as required. Fire inspection, again, is a team of two. Those two are, again, charged with enforcing the Fire Safety Act and regulations. And again, that's a provincial statute. And what that is, is after a building permit has been issued and granted an occupancy, if it's a public building, we are mandated to go in on a rotation basis, depending on the type of occupancy, to re-inspect to ensure that public safety is being adhered to. So that, depending on the type of building, and again, we'll go into this deeper at another day, but depending on the type of occupancy, that re-inspection could be... day, but depending on the type of occupancy, that re-inspection could be one year, three years, or five years. And again, the act tells us what that timeline needs to be. So, that list is always growing. Every permit that we issue that falls into that category is adding to that, and then they just add to the bottom of that list. So, it's a never-ending cycle of re-inspections for that team. That team will also do two other things, so they'll do inspections for liquor licensing, looking to do any kind of a special event. We work in conjunction with the provincial fire marshal to do those inspections as of interest, I think, to Kings County, where we are a farming community. We also support our farmers by doing what we call foreign labor inspections. The federal government does require that those units meet a certain standard, so this county has chosen to do those inspections annually for our farmers. And it is substantial. In Kings County, they have farm foreign labor. There's just over a thousand people that come into Kings County roughly from March until October. So, it is a fairly large influx, and that's approximately a hundred and forty units annually that we're going in and doing those inspections. Moving on to some other really one-off positions, so our bylaw enforcement officer is Tom Whalen. Bylaw enforcement officer, in terms of responsibility, probably the largest part of the day-to-day is going to be the enforcement of one section of the MGA, dangerous or unsightly. Majority of the complaints that come in our way are related to concerns of your constituents that they believe that they're witnessing something that is dangerous and unsightly. So, that's quite time-consuming, but that's the majority. A few of the other things that would fall under that position are swimming pool bylaw, open burning and smoke control bylaw, the taxi bylaw. The taxi bylaw one is an annual licensing program that we do of all the taxis that are operating within the county. And then, of course, the animal bylaw and the dog bylaws. While we do not enforce them, we are the department that oversees the SPCA's contract with us to look after the implementation of those two particular bylaws. Accessibility coordinator, again, another future presentation will be coming your way. The accessibility plan for Kings County is in place, and again, that's a mandated requirement from the province under the Accessibility Act. And currently, we are, well, once we, we repopulate the joint accessibility plan with members. We'll continue the work there to amend the original plan, which, again, is another requirement under the act that we review that, so that'll be coming your way very shortly. And another exciting thing about the accessibility coordinator, again, she'll be doing a presentation probably in December, Committee of the Whole, on the plan, but as well as really letting you know what does it mean when you see on our agendas accommodations are available for the public. And we can kind of walk you through what that means for public meetings. Our newest position in the department is our emergency services coordinator. We're lucky enough to have a very experienced gentleman filling that. Craig Gibson recently came to us, and Craig's main functions for us will be the, he's going to be our liaison with the fire department, as well as the RCMP, which is his background. He is the county's EMO coordinator, and he is our designated person to work with our Remo office as well. Development services, as I mentioned earlier, that's our newest department, and, sorry, service area, and Mandy Burgess is the manager there. So, that team, what their focus is, is really what we often refer to as development control. So, land use bylaw, subdivision bylaw, the administration and enforcement of any development agreements that we approve. So, it's a bit of a wide range, but it's very, it's a position that is regulated in terms of, the land use bylaw says this, this is how the permit can be issued or can't. And again, next week, we'll have a more in-depth presentation on how that position functions daily and how that interacts with you. A new position that we are currently recruiting for is our housing accelerator position. Again, just as a quick summary, development officers are going to enforce the land use bylaw, the subdivision bylaw, the vendor's bylaw, mobile home bylaw, heritage bylaw, heritage registry bylaw, and the Grand Prairie Conservation District. Those are really the biggest things that you'll see that are falling under their preview. Subdivision bylaw is another one-off flag watch. We are currently in the final stages of rewriting that bylaw and bringing that to both the public and council for comment and ultimately approval. Development services, in terms of the housing accelerator fund, some of you may or may not have really followed through, but it is pretty exciting for Kings County. We were awarded, last year, five point nine eight million from the federal government to try to incentivize more housing in Kings County. I think it's of particular interest that, or point of pride, five point nine eight million is what Kings County received. There were, I believe, five hundred and forty-four applications nationally, so it was open, and we were competing against municipalities across the country, and only a hundred and seventy-eight were successful, us being one of them. So, we have received our first payment of one point four million dollars. And again, we'll be doing another presentation, but the highlights of that funding are, we'll get four payments of one point four million dollars approximately. Each year, we need to show how are we progressing in our housing targets, and how are we progressing with some of the other initiatives that we said that we would do with this money? So, a couple of those are enabling accessory dwelling units. We've done that, so check. We are looking at a better way of doing permitting in the future. We call it e-permitting, but it's hopefully a little bit easier process for the applicant as well as staff. And I guess the big one that will be coming your way, too, is the federal government would be requiring us to ensure, within the growth centers, lots would be zoned to permit up to four units on every lot that is zoned residential. Sounds like a lot, but right now, we allow three units on every lot, so even in our one zone. And then, finally, when we say, what does it mean that we want to increase our dwelling units? The federal government said that, to them, that means we need to increase our dwelling units over the next three years by two hundred and thirty-three units. And right now, we are on target at a hundred and seventy-eight units, so we're well on the way to meeting our three-year commitment. Very quickly, just wanted to, I'm throwing around building permit, development permit, they are two different things that we'll want to keep separate. Building permit, easy way to remember that is, that's the National Building Code outside of the municipalities controlled, make changes to it. It is a provincially adopted piece of legislation that we are required to enforce. On the flip side, the development permit is issued by the municipality on documents that we created and we adopted and are issued by our development officers. Very quickly, stats are always fun. This is just quickly demonstrating that our numbers are increasing, you know, good news story. What I would say is, even since this, when I made this slide back in October, permit applications at that point were nine hundred and eighty-one. I checked today, and we are at one thousand and eighteen. So, it's busy, and that's good. Our last service area is planning. Planning, you'll see a fair bit in this arena here. Again, it's the manager, so Laura Moser, along with three planners, Katie Oldman, Alice Jacob, and Perry Bowman. They will regularly present to you applications that have come to us from the public, typically is where that starts. They'll look after inquiries from the public. Typically, that would be after an individual has spoken to a development officer, and there are no options in what we call as a break, so the land use bylaw isn't permitting the idea being put forward. It would go to a planner. The planner would then walk through with the applicant, you know, what are the options? Does it qualify for rezoning? Do our documents allow for a development agreement? Is there some other change? So, we walk that through with those residents. And then, I guess the only other thing I'd mention is our current planning documents, I call them new, they're not exactly new at this point, but municipal council approved them in November of 2019 with the province, sending them back, approved not until March of 2020. Yeah, so, four years old, and so, really still in the infant's stage of how are they working? This slide might be one that you'll want to keep at your fingertips. It really helps all of us understand who does what, and what are our abilities, or the public's ability, to appeal any kind of decision. So, development permit is issued by DO. Council doesn't see that. It doesn't come this way at all. But it would go to the UARB if the DO refused to issue the development permit. I won't go through all of them, but another good example would be a billing permit, the billing official issues, it doesn't come to this body, that is able to also be appealed, but it's actually to a very unique appeal body, and that's called the Nova Scotia Building Advisory Committee. So, pretty much every process that our department deals with, there's some kind of an appeal process, but they're all slightly different. Again, we're going to be back talking in depth on pretty much everything I just went over at a very high level. And I think that was it. So, I'll open it up for questions, otherwise, there is a motion on the floor to receive this as a briefing.
Great, thank you, Director. And is there any questions from any member of council to the director? I have a question. First of all, your opening comment, you said you had a diverse group, and I would have to concur with that. I also say that I think this council would fit that bill, too, is a pretty diverse group. But anyway, as far as customer service goes, I guess it's a very simplistic question, but you have the great big open lobby area that can be a little bit intimidating. When an individual comes in, if they don't go right straight to the counter, are they offered, can I assist you or something? Because I can see some people maybe wandering around the lobby and feel a little intimidated because of the size. And I know in the bank situation, you go right up to the counter, but I just, as a question, is that generally the rule of thumb?
To you, Mr. Mayor. Great question, and yes, staff, as soon as they see an individual come in, if they're not already dealing with somebody, will certainly motion them over, how can I help you? Absolutely.
That's great to hear, thank you. All right, I guess I don't see any other questions, so would a member of council make a motion to receive the presentation from the director, please? From Counselor Lutz, second by Deputy Mayor Peckford. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, please press your button. Okay. Motion carried, and so now, we'll move on to the next presentation, and I want to thank Director for that, and Engineering Public Works Director Brad, please come forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I always have trouble with that, and I'm glad to see that I'm not the only one that has trouble with it sometimes. My name's Brad Carrigan, I'm Director of Engineering and Public Works. I've been with the municipality of Kings, as I mentioned, I believe, last time in front of you, for just over a year now, and come from private sector before that, as well as seven or eight years in another municipality, with the municipality West Hans, in the role of Director of Public Works there. So, the Engineering and Public Works Department structure, and we often refer to it, or you'll see it, as the EPW Department, which is Engineering Public Works, has three different divisions. One is environmental service and climate resiliency. One is engineering services, and one is operations, or what you sometimes hear referred to as just simply public works. The Environmental Services and Climate Resiliency Division consists of water utilities, laboratory testing that we do in-house, climate resiliency, environmental monitoring, water, linear infrastructure, and wastewater collection and treatment, so that would be your sewer systems. Engineering Services consists of capital project design and engineering, municipal facilities management, construction management of different capital projects that we have, looking after municipal streets, sidewalks, and stormwater infrastructure, active transportation, parks and trails, facilities, and asset management planning. And our Public Works Division is responsible for municipal and regional sewer collection, municipal stormwater municipal stormwater collection, municipal water distribution, Maintenance Support of Water and Sewer Treatment Facilities, and again, Asset Management, Maintenance, and Reporting Functions. So we basically have, as I said, three departments as well. We all join in, and mostly our managers are headline for our customer service, but really that work then gets distributed to our EPW staff. So some of the things for our customer service is acting as customer service for EPW as well as looking after water meters, Resolution of General EPW Customer Inquiries, Department Purchasing Support, Capital Projects Procurement and Administrative Support, Looking After Our File Management, Recording Secretary for various EPW Directed Meetings, so some of those would be our Asset Management Committee and our Regional Sewer Committee, Public Notifications for External EPW Communications, so we work with Ashley Thompson and Rob's Department, Deputy CAO Department, and Providing General Administrative Support for all of the other EPW Divisions. So the team members are led by our Customer Service Rep and Administration Assistant, which is Stephanie Elliot. Our Public Works Manager is Jeremy Sharp. Our Engineering Services Manager is Lewis Pearson. Our Environmental Services Manager position is vacant. We lost our Engineering Services Manager, Michael Edgar, only a week or two ago, and myself. So our Engineering Division, the types of activities that they look after is, is looking after breaking soils and sewer inspections and permitting, Development and Subdivision Servicing Review and Approval, In-Host Surveying, Geomatics and Engineering Inspections, some in-house design CAD and specification review, Capital Project Planning, and EPW Division Support of the Engineering-Based Capital Projects. Our Engineering Staff also looks after project management and contract administration and our overall municipal facilities operations. So our Engineering Division Team consists of Paul Gray as a CET, Luke Swanwick, which is a, a CET or Certified Engineering Technician, Sean Veltoven, who is our Buildings and Facilities Coordinator. Donnie Bennett is a skilled laborer that works seasonally for us. We have typically hire another skilled laborer, that's a position that's currently vacant as well. And we're also trying, we have a lot of capital projects that are in those, in the works right now and carrying forward and see the need of having a project management professional. That position was budgeted for but never filled this year and as I said, the Engineering Division is led by Lewis Pearson, who's the Division Manager. Our Public Works Division looks after, or our Operations Division, or Public Works are synonymous, so they look after our sanitary sewer services, so our sewer collection, our water distribution, stormwater management, so ditches and catch basins and things like that of any systems that we own. And I put emphasis on municipal-owned road and sidewalk infrastructure. So if people don't know, there's various roads and sidewalks. Many of our sidewalks in the county are actually owned and maintained by villages. Most of the roads in the county, majority are owned by the province, but we do have municipal-owned streets as well, that would be mostly subdivision streets. After 1996, province stopped inheriting, stopped taking over any subdivision streets, so all of those streets from 1996 onward are all municipal-owned for the most part in any subdivision. There'll be a presentation later on, I don't know if that's next week or in the, in the coming weeks, that will talk about J-Class Roads, because we have provincial's J-Class Roads that there's a special agreement with, which was a, a contract started in 1995 or 1996. Public Works Capital Project Planning, which could, it consists of some projects we have on the go, which is lift station renewals and lift station retrofits that we're doing right now to upgrade some of our lift stations. And our Parks, Trails, and Active Transportation is recently moved to our Public Works Division. So Ashley Brooker, who's our AT Coordinator, works under the Public Works Division now. Team Members is a very large group that work with Jeremy. These are Trevor Saret, who's a maintenance planner, Devin Davidson, Mark Sargent, and Ben Shaw are all millwrights. Austin Brown and Kim Maher are industrial electricians. Jason Roberts is a Geomatics Engineering Technician. Ashley Brooker, as I mentioned, which is AT Parks and Trails. Patrick Lewis and Bruce Emmon are our Vector Operators. Keith Tucker, Mike Videlko, and Chris Mailman are full-time skilled labors. Donnie Bennett is a seasonal skilled laborer and Jeremy Sharp as Division Manager. Our Environmental Division, so this is our Environmental Division, the easiest way to explain most of our Environmental Division is our treatment plants. So would be our sewer treatment plants, our water treatment plants, and Pumping Services, Environmental Compliance and Reporting. We operate, our Environmental Division operates our municipal lab, lab central services and environmental capital project planning, so any capital projects that are Environmental Service Division-based. And in addition is our Climate Resiliency Initiatives and Capital Projects, which is handled by Sarah Burco. Our Environmental Team Members are Rod Kramer, Dave Lord, Chris Rotting, Tom Nichols, Kevin Croft, Larry Fredericks, are all our treatment plant operators. Janice Emmon and John Schofield are our two lab technicians. Carmy Telleford is our compliance officer and as I mentioned, our Division Manager is currently vacant and hopefully will be filled soon. And our Climate Change or Climate Resiliency Team Member is Sarah Burco, is our Project Just to give you a highlight on some of the, the current Engineering and Public Works projects that are ongoing right now, and these are kind of color-coded, green, gray, blue, and red, depending on the type of project that they are. So ongoing capital projects we're currently working on, municipal sewer deslедging activities, enhanced border, Aylesford and Canning. We're constructing two new sewer screening buildings, one in Hance Border and one in Aylesford. Multi-year program to renew fleet as well as safety and, and shop equipment. We're working on approvals to start installing 4.8 kilometers of new Greenwood Sewer Transmission Main. We're currently working on replacement of an 18-inch replacement sewer force main, 1.2 kilometers of that in, that runs between Kentville and New Minus. Purchasing some new lift station generators, both regionally and also municipal, municipal lift station generators. Replacing some compressors at our regional sewer treatment plant and refurbishing our sewer treatment plant overflow chambers. So that's just a piece of the regional sewer treatment plant that was in the original design. The overflow chambers are leaking a little bit, so we're in there trying to get those sealed up. Some of our other, this list continued, is the municipal EV charging stations that you've seen started outside. Working on 650 meters of new sidewalk in Colebrook area. Working on municipal parks and trails accessibility improvements, which is a multi-year program. Working on replacement branded signage at our municipal parks, facilities, and some of our lakes, our beaches and lakefront sites. Extension of the Harris Moon Trail, a project we're working on in Grand Prairie. Municipal Road Active Ceiling Program, so this would be taking our municipal-owned streets and doing crack ceiling, patch paving, as well as some repaving of our own roads. As well, we share with the province in some J-Class Road Paving, which is a complex program we'll get into a little bit later. And just finishing the update on our municipal engineering specifications. Some of the projects that we have coming through that will be presented to you further that are, most of these are already budgeted for, are, are projects that are in the, in the works right now, is replacement sewer and road infrastructure on Me Road and Chapel Road. Canning Sewer Treatment Plant Expansion, new municipal lift station generator sets, municipal lift station upgrades, which is, we've got 72 lift stations in the county, so if we're not doing work at upgrades to a lift station, that can catch up to us really quick. So we have lift station improvements that we need to do every year. We're working on, as I mentioned, regional deslедging activities at the regional sewer treatment plant. That's carryforward of project that we've been working on for a few years and spent a lot of money on. But a plant the size of, our regional plant needs to have active deslедging, you know, every few years. Regional lift station upgrades as well as working towards a new municipal water and wastewater laboratory that we've identified that we, we need to upgrade. And the biggest one, which is really ties everything together for our entire department, is our Asset Management Work Order and Workflow Software. We've got a software right now that we're using. We're having some struggles with it and we're in the process right now, I believe, tender close this week or closes tomorrow possibly, that we will be going through procurement event to choose a new work order and workflow software, which really ties all of our asset management together so that we can forecast where we should be spending our money in the future. And in closing, Mr. Mayor, give this recommendation if somebody would like to make it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great, thank you Director. Any questions? Okay. Counselor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I'm wondering on the environmental, do we also monitor our nitrate levels?
Nothing that I'm aware of for nitrate. I would have to check to confirm, Counselor Gates, but nothing that's standing out on the reports I'm seeing now, but I would have to check to confirm.
Well, this, I got a question, I guess it's a newbie question. As far as testing of the water quality in lakes, is that something that we do or is that an Department of Environment?
Certain lakes, through you, Mr. Mayor, certain lakes, we do have a lake monitoring program that we are a partner of and facilitate. It's done through volunteers in the community at, at some of these lakes. It's not all of the lakes, but we do actively participate in a lake monitor, like water quality monitoring program.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you Director. I guess we're looking for a, a motion to receive from Counselor Gates and, and second by Counselor Sappington. Please press, press your button. Well, we got everybody voted in favor except for the mover. Motion carried. Sorry Doug, had to have some fun with that. All right, Administration, Business Expenses and Hospitality Policies. Director Gregg, please. All set and ready to go.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Council. So the remaining of the department overviews, presentations by the CEO and myself are going to, scheduled for Tuesday. So we're going to switch gears and go into a little bit more of the weeds and details on a few other orientations. So the first one I'm going to cover is, has to do with hospitality and business expense policies. So both those items, hospitality and business expense, are entrenched pretty deeply in statutory requirements. So I'm going to talk about that for a few slides to give you context about why the policies are there, why we cover the certain things that we do. So under the Municipal Government Act specifically, Section Number 23 goes into detail about it. Subsection Three talks about how each municipality shall, not a may or should, but a shall, adopt an expense policy and a hospitality policy. It goes into more detail in Subsection Four, where it talks about what, the details of what an expense policy should contain. So it talks about things like prohibit the municipality from reimbursing expense claiming for alcohol and identifying the persons who have signing authority to authorize the reimbursement of expenses, set out the rules regarding corporate credit cards, apply to, it should apply to every reportable individual in the municipality and that reportable individual is defined. It's basically all of council and the mayor and the CAO, and then comply with the regulations. So I'll touch on that a little bit here in a second. That Section 23 of the Municipal Government Act goes on to talk about what a hospitality policy should also contain. So very specific about the individual items that need to be contained within it. And then Subsection Six talks about how an expense will only be reimbursed if it's authorized pursuant to both of those policies. And in Section Seven, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, is that by the January 31st, following a municipal election, both of those policies need to be reviewed and have a motion from council that either re adopts the policies or amends one or both of them. So that'll be something that our policy analysts will, will bring to you later on, but just wanted to make you aware of those statutory requirements in that area. So further in the Municipal Government Act, there's some relevant sections that talk about reporting. So a municipality under, under Section 65D1 shall prepare an expense report for each reportable individual. So again, that's a term of the, the people that are here within council chambers, within 90 days of the end of each fiscal quarter. Subsection Two talks about how it will be posted publicly on a website for the municipality and that we should comply with all regulations. So a lot of requirements in terms of how you exactly post that information. A hospitality expense report under Subsection Three, again, within 90 days of the end of each fiscal quarter. Subsection Four talks about how the report must comply with the policy of the municipality, be posted on a website, and comply with all the regulations. And then Subsection Five talks about how we have to prepare an annual summary of, of both of those reports and submit them to the, to the province. So of course, when you have those kinds of legislation, there's also some regulations. So FRAM, if the first time you haven't heard that term, it's the Financial Reporting and Accounting Manual. That is a regulation that's pursuant to the Municipal Government Act under Sections 451 and 520 that empower the minister to create those regulations. So in that, there's some specific sections of FRAM, so I've noted the Section 33B talks about the expense policy. And here's what every policy is supposed to have. Here's the reporting requirements associated with it, how it should look in the financial statements and any additional audit and revenue or review requirements. So it goes in the detail and kind of tells you in a lot more detail of exactly what your policy should contain. Very similar type thing under FRAM for the hospitality policy too. So everything that we have contained in both those policies are kind of spelled out within the regulations. So that leads me to kind of give you the context of why we have these things in the first place, it's all legislated. So we've got two policies and I've got a hyperlink in the slide deck, so feel free to, to click on them, but you can get them off of our website as well. So it's the hospitality policy, which is FIN 0520, and then the business expense policy, which is FIN 05008. I'll spend a little bit of time on the hospitality policy, but I'll spend a little more time on the business expense policy. We've had a lot of questions already from, especially new counselors, that are just wondering how the reimbursement process works, how they claim, what expense reports they use, so I'm going to touch on that, some of that to kind of help you out a little bit, hopefully. So the hospitality policy, really its purpose is really to establish those guidelines for if we're engaging in any kind of hospitality-related activities. So this change, I think, came down probably about eight years ago or so, where they very specifically require a hospitality policy by each municipality. So the objective is to clearly identify where hospitality expenses may be permitted, establish the expenditures that would qualify, and establish the approval process. So under our hospitality policy, we kind of break it into major sections, so we talk about the eligible expenses. And so really what this has to do with is really when the municipality has a hospitality event that's conducting business activities that engage with people that are really from outside of the municipality. So we've got some kind of diplomacy-type event and where, you know, protocol and the business development requirements would dictate having some kind of a hospitality event. So that's kind of at a very high level, the entire section of the policy under 4.2 goes into all the details associated with it. It talks about, okay, if it's appropriate, you know, which are rare occasions where alcohol-related expenses or gifts are appropriate, our policy goes into great detail to explain how that may be appropriate, how, how would have to be identified, what would happen in, in the event that, that happens. It talks about the hospitality expense request, so how you go about doing that, like if you're going to request- So like if you're going to request that type of event, how would you go about doing it? How do you get preapproval associated with it? Goes into detail about how to submit the expenses associated with that. They're closely monitored by myself, the CIO. So those things are watched very closely. And then the policy gets into reporting requirements. So we're required to report that stuff on the website quarterly, like prescribed in the regulations, and also submit an annual summary report. So all of that information gets reviewed by the Audit and Finance Committee. So it gets presented to them on an annual basis in the, in the fall meeting for Audit and Finance, and then it gets posted. So the last number of years, you know, there's been zero items that are contained in there from a hospitality perspective. We still post that, we still disclose it, we still list it up on the website. It's very much to kind of place a lot of control around the hospitality side of things. And like I mentioned before, January thirty-first, every four years, these policies have to be reviewed. So that'll be coming to council at a later date. On the business expense side of things, again, separate policy. F-I-N zero-five-zero-zero-eight. So the purpose of this one, and this probably impacts more day to day to all employees and obviously all members of council as well. So this is one you'd be a little bit more interested in and I kind of give some summary points here. But probably most importantly is have a good look at the policy, give it a good read. There's a lot of detail in there about what you can and can't do and when it applies. I'm going to try and touch on some of it right here to kind of save you some of that bother, but make sure you always refer to the actual policy. So it's really for when you're conducting municipal business away from the municipal offices. And then the expense policy identifies, you know, what's eligible circumstances that it would apply to, the procedures, that type of stuff. So I'm going to go in through a few of the details. I know you don't have it right in front of you right now. But there is, section four point two of the policy identifies the eligible circumstances for members of council. So it's very specific. And I talk a little bit later about how best to kind of go through your expense reports with it. But at a high level, it deals with attendance at council and committee meetings from a mileage perspective. So no problems claiming that. Attendance at any meetings, boards, commissions, things of that stuff that you might be appointed to by council. If you're an alternate for any of those meetings for other members of council. Conferences, meetings with NSFM, that type of stuff. But also it gets into meetings with other government agencies and businesses that have been scheduled by the council or the mayor, the deputy mayor, or the CIO. Any public planning meetings, you need to hear Trish talk about public information meetings or public hearings, applies to that. Training events that you might be involved in. Needing to come in like for something specific that you're meeting with the CIO to discuss municipal business. Attendance at social functions within your district. So if you've got some type of special thing that's happening within your district and you're going to be there as a dignitary representing municipality, that would apply as well. And then there's a section under four point two that talks about meetings with organizations, community groups, nonprofits, those associated with village commissions that have been prearranged, that you've been invited to and that you deem to be necessary and important in undertaking your, in the best interest of the municipality. And then there's a catch-all, anything that's approved by council. So very specific in terms of the items. I'll talk a few minutes about how, you know, we match everything up that's submitted against what does the policy say is allowed and really have to make sure it ticks off one of those boxes. Section four point three outlines some additional items for the mayor and deputy mayor that are eligible. So attendance at social functions where you're representing the municipality, more at a broader level than just a district level. So things like Remembrance Day ceremonies or grand openings or things of that nature as well. Importantly, section four point four talks about non allowable expenses. So I'll read it verbatim because it's really meant to be very specific. Council members shall not be reimbursed for meeting expenses with individual constituents, individual electors, or individual complainants as those expenses are deemed to be incidental to the discharge of duties and included in regular remuneration. So if you're meeting with someone one-on-one and you're having those kinds of individual meetings, those wouldn't be eligible. Section four point five goes into the category. So there's things in there related to car travel and it goes into a lot of detail about the mileage rate and, you know, making sure you try and carpool if you can and, you know, take the most direct route, that kind of stuff. So have a good look at it. Car rental if needed, if it's more economical. Air travel if one is needed. Accommodation, that would be needed for hotel accommodations, it kind of outlines some of those details. Meals is an interesting one. There's a Schedule C in the policy that goes in the detail about it. It's basically, Schedule C outlines like when you would be eligible to claim for a breakfast, when you would be eligible for a supper. So things that are related to the time that you leave or, you know, when you might get back. So it outlines those details. And it has a per diem amount associated with each of the various meals. So if it's breakfast and you're eligible for that, there's a set amount that applies to it. It also, if you're traveling within the municipality for something and you're eligible for those meals, it's a set rate associated if you're just within Kings County. Kind of the idea that you're closer to home, you're going to probably, you know, obviously have to eat anyway. So it's a lower amount associated with that. So have a good look at the meal side of it and in that schedule. Obviously telephone, while it doesn't apply as much with cell phones, taxi fares, parking tolls, and family care. So Schedule E goes in the detail about when that applies, who it applies to, what the daily amounts are, how to go about submitting for that. So there's a lot of detail in the policy that kind of outlines some of those. Four point six talks about the use of municipal credit cards. You'll recall back in the legislation, we have to be very specific about this. Obviously, to sum it up, basically no personal use. Receipts only, has to be tied to things that are within policy. This applies mostly to staff that would have credit cards. The mayor is going to be receiving a corporate card as well from the municipality. Basically, it has to be something that's contained within here. And when you're looking at things like mileage or meals, obviously you wouldn't do something like that on a credit card because there's per diem rates and there's reimbursement based on the mileage. Really it would come into play for accommodations. Four point eight goes in the detail about submission of claims. So I'll take a few minutes for this because this is kind of important as well. Is that, you know, we have that provincial requirement to report quarterly. So we've outlined that all travel and expense claims should be submitted by the fifteenth of the month following the quarter end. So if it's January to March, by April fifteenth. Typically, we'd want to see these done on a quarterly basis. So you keep like a running total and I'll talk about that in a second about the tools for helping you do that. Accumulate those on a quarterly basis, submit those to myself for approval before April fifteenth for January to March and in each of the four quarters. That allows us to process them. There's a return form that I'm going to talk about here in a second that gets completed that you have to sign off on, gets posted to the website and it helps us stay in compliance with the provincial requirements. So when it comes to submission of the claims, a few key points to kind of be mindful of. All expenses incurred must be submitted by the complainant. Basically, you have to do your own expense reports because you take accountability for those. And like I said, they get posted on the website for everybody to see. There is a clause within the policy that says in no circumstances will claims be paid for expenditures incurred more than six months in the past. So basically a hard cutoff on when you're able to get reimbursed for something if more than six months has elapsed and wouldn't be eligible. So for claims for expenses incurred when you're traveling or attending conferences, there's a specific form in the policy that you should, you should use, a sample's in the policy. There's electronic forms available in both Excel and PDF. If it isn't on the council website, let us know and we'll certainly get some up there. Those get updated annually, so very important to get the most current one because it has the current mileage rate. So watch out for that. If it's claims for just regular mileage and meals, be sure to use the regular mileage expense claim. It's a sample's in Schedule B and there's also electronic copies of that. Then kind of on the tail end here of section four point eight submission, everything has to have a receipt unless it's for mileage or the meal allowance like I talked about. You would submit them to myself for approval. I go through them closely and then I would forward them to the mayor for his approval. And then they would get reimbursed on your, with your payroll payments. Like I mentioned before, the requirement is that we have to publish those quarterly. They get reviewed, there's a summary sheet that would get reviewed and prepared rather by staff. They'll go into your mail slot in the council office space that's in there. You should look at those, make sure they're accurate. Then you would sign off on it, return it back to us. And then once everything's signed, we'll put those up on the website. And then like I said, we do an annual report to the Audit and Finance Committee. And then as section four point one-two of the policy talks about how we have to submit that to Audit and Finance. And then January thirty-first, also there'll be that review every four years as well. There is one small thing I wanted to mention, a related policy to this. So under the council and committee remuneration policy, there's a section within that that talks about allowable expenses for elected officials. This is looked at a global basis, is that we set, and we do this within our budget, we set the maximum amount of remuneration allowable for expenses for the discharge of duties at twenty percent of the total remuneration of council. So that's how that budget gets established. It's, it's a hard cap on this. We haven't come close to it, but it's established as a cap, so I just want to make you aware of it. So just final comments before I wrap up on this part of it is just, again, have a good look at both those policies. Review them closer to get more guidance about them. I would encourage you, if you're so inclined, to use the Excel form of the expense reports rather than the PDF. Makes it easier to use, makes it more legible for us that are reading the expense reports. And it does all the auto calculations for the mileage rates and for the totals and whatnot. I will say, you know, we look at them closely. So I will, and I've had this conversation already with Mr. Mayor. Don't be offended if I come back to you to say, hey, what's this item? Because I want to make sure it conforms to the policy. And one tip is that consider looking at section four point two of the policy and take the time to write in, okay, this is four point two point three, so that I can easily tell, you know, what it relates to. Some of the things that are obvious like council or things like, a lot of people fill those out, networks out quite well. But just, yeah, we do look at them closely. So they're going to be posted and you're going to be signing off on them. So you want to make sure they're accurate and they conform with policy. And then I guess most importantly, if you've got any questions along the way, don't hesitate to reach out to myself or anybody within the department. We'll certainly answer your questions about any of those policies or any others.
So that's the end of my presentation, Mr. Mayor. And I think Haley has a recommendation in terms of receiving it if there's no questions.
Thank you, Director Gregg. And I think the last part of your comment is, if you have any dote at all, Director Gregg is only a phone call away. Questions? Counselor Harding.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Could you send those out again, those forms? And one problem I've been having with the forms that's come out lately, or all along actually, but the last one too was month, day, and year, when you put it in, it flips it. And I look at it and I redo it again and after a while I just give up. And it's one of those things, but just how the program comes out, I guess, it just whatever.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. So a lot of that has to do with your global settings on your, on your individual computer. So the default that you would have in terms of how that would look. So it's hard to kind of establish the spreadsheet to conform with everybody's individual settings. But you're right, you've got to, you've got to be careful of that and watch it. We'll figure it out if you're going to fill it out. But I mean, by all means, if you, if you've got good handwriting, feel free to use the PDF. But it'd be a little bit more work with additions and stuff, but.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions. So can I have a mover in a second or? Move by Counselor Allen, second by Counselor, oh man. Hiltz, sorry. Any further questions? All those in favor, please press your button. Motion carried. Okay, that's great. Thank you, Director. And now we'll move on to the next part is number six, villages and village municipal governments, governance. And our CIO will be making a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. So this presentation here, I'm going to attempt to cover six topics. The first one being governance and just a little bit of very high level background. So in our province, there are one, two, three, four, five versions of local government. You have a regional municipality, which is generally, in the past at least, it's been formed by special legislation. And then that special legislation, with the exception of HRM, refers it back to the Municipal Government Act. You have county government, which we are a prime example. We are county government. You can have a district level local government, so for example, the District of Lunenburg. So sometimes the District of Chester, for example, would be part of Lunenburg County. There's, I think in Lunenburg, there would be the Town of Lunenburg, the Town of Mahone Bay, the Town of Bridgewater, and the District of Chester, and the municipality of the District of Lunenburg. Towns, so they were incorporated under the Former Towns Act. The thing here about the towns and the villages is there was a piece of legislation passed in two thousand fifteen where there are no longer, there's no longer the ability to incorporate a new town or village. And then you have villages. So they were incorporated under the Former Villages Act. They have limited legislative authority. And again, post two thousand fifteen, there are no new villages. The legislative authorities, so for town, district, county, and regional governments, they're governed under the Municipal Government Act. There's a broad range of authorities. So as I just mentioned, CBRM, the Region of Queens, and Westhants were brought in by special legislation, but at some point in time that, or at least that legislation was more transitional. It told them to set up a coordinator and to transfer assets and all the mechanical types of things that have to happen. And then the Municipal Government Act itself was amended and they fall under that. You may have heard since your time on council that HRM has its own charter. If you were to take the charter and put it side by side to the Municipal Government Act, they're very similar. Villages, as I mentioned, are incorporated on the Village Services Act. Unlike the town, district, and county and regional and HRM, which have fairly broad range of authorities specific to local government, villages have much more limited authorities. So for example, they require the county or district government to guarantee any of their long-term debt and the do not control land use planning. So either the district or the county government in which the village is located would do land use planning. So some fast facts here, property owners within an incorporated village pay both the village and county or district government taxes as the situation dictates. So for example, I am in the Village of Port Williams personally. So I get a tax bill from the village and I get a tax bill from the municipality. Yourselves, if you're representing a village, you obviously, you represent the people that are in the village as well. So there's, there's two sets of governance there. There's, there would be commissioners and then would be the district counselor. The municipality aims to meet formally with all seven villages once per calendar year. And the municipality and villages have partnered on accessibility. So Director Javert mentioned that during her presentation. Skip the first one, I think I've talked about that. MGA four-four-eight, that's a section of the Municipal Government Act. It states that if any village dissolves, that all the assets and liabilities, including outstanding debentures of the former village are vested in the municipality in which the former village is located. I mentioned previously here, just a second ago, that the Municipal Finance Division, that's part of the Nova Scotia Government, requires municipalities to guarantee the issuance of any long-term debt. That's, that's issued by villages. Under the MGAs, villages can provide some local services but rely on the district or county governments for other services. So for example, if you're in the village, your village rate does not go towards policing or education or assessment services. Those are paid for from the county taxes, not the village taxes. Villages are governed by a village commission that is elected for three-year terms. And village elections are not covered by the Municipal Elections Act. So for example, you're here for four years, village commissioners are here for three years. And I would note there's some variability even within our seven villages about how the elections are carried out. I don't have an explanation, so if someone asks me that question, I'll answer it now. I don't have an explanation why they don't follow to the Municipal Elections Act. I mean, I think it might make sense that you had the same type of term and the same election date in October every four years, but that's not the way it's structured now. So as you are aware, and I'm looking around the table and here I am speaking of villages, there's a lot of former village commissioners sitting around the table, so I'm mindful of that. So there are more villages in Kings County than any other county in Nova Scotia in the province. So we have seven and they're listed there. Aylesford, Canning, Cornwallis Square, Greenwood, Kingston, New Minas, and the Village of Port Williams. So certain villages collect their own tax. Other, others have the municipality collect on their behalf. Certain villages also issue other rates and charges to recover costs. So for example, if they have a wastewater system, oftentimes they'll have a special charge for wastewater. So for example, the Village of New Minus puts their wastewater charge on their water bill. So when you get a water bill, you're paying for both the water consumption and base charge and you're paying for the village's sewer charges. There's been growing, there's been growing ratepayer confusion, at least in my estimation and the estimation of our revenue manager, about dual village and municipal tax billings. So property owners that are new to the area typically are not fully aware of the level of taxation during the purchase. So for example, they may have been incorrectly advised that their tax bill should be this because someone inadvertently forgot to mention to them that there's a village bill on top of that. So in the last, I'd say, four months or so, I've met with two ratepayers about this specific instance. The first one was very surprised, didn't know that there was an additional amount on their tax bill. And the second one was, oh, you know, I live on a budget, I put money aside in my mortgage account and unfortunately my mortgage account, and unfortunately, my mortgage mortgage account wasn't sufficient to pay both bills. Why didn't I know this type of thing? So, uh, we're going to try to, uh, address that in, uh, in the next coming, uh, tax bills. So to mitigate ratepayer confusion, we did offer to print, collect and remit all village tax bills. Uh, those that currently administer their own collection declined, deciding to maintain their independence. And I would say in front of you, I I get that, you know, that's that's understandable. Ratepayers often pay village taxes to the municipality or vice versa, which adds to the administrative taxes. So, um, I'm going to defer here to Director Barr, and I should know this because I just asked this question a week ago. How many tax accounts roughly do we have? Thirty thousand. So you have thirty thousand accounts, two tax bills a year. So all of those, so, you know, you have sixty-four thousand entries in a year, you've got to balance that back to your main G L account. That's a feat. That's a balancing feat. And then when you have someone paying the village and they have to reimburse us, so there's payables and receivables coming and going, you can imagine the amount of, uh, administrative burden that can that can, uh, happen there. So we're investigating modification to municipal tax bills issued to property owners within the villages to better explain the dual taxation, to try to cut down on this relationship and back and forth with administrative burden in both the villages and the municipality by these tax inadvertently, these tax bills being paid in the wrong offices. Uh, so you'll hear, I guess, in upcoming meetings, we'll probably talk a bit about, uh, key performance indicators of staff. So for example, that will be a key performance indicator of one of our staff members. They will be assigned to go in and do some coding changes on our tax bill and try to make that a bit clearer for, uh, for the ratepayers. In terms of, um, the taxation, just a little summary chart here of what the village rates currently are. So in Aylesford, it's twenty cents per hundred dollars of assessment that's added on. Uh, Canning, it's forty-three for residential and sixty for commercial. Uh, Cornwallis Square, it's twelve and a half cents. Greenwood is twenty-six for residential and thirty-two for commercial. In Kingston, it's thirty-two cents, New Minus forty-two cents, and Port Williams thirty-six cents. The municipality provides funding for fire and recreation services located in villages and access to community grants. So I've developed just a simple little chart here, uh, of where things come from. So for example, fire capital, it comes from an area rate, uh, while fire operations comes from the general tax rate. So I know the deputy C A O is going to give you a presentation on Tuesday on fire, so that you'll get a lot more detail. I wish it was that clean. It's not. Like I'm looking at a former chair in the village of Canning where you have a rural fire district commission, you have a society running the fire department, and you have the village itself. So there's all these interplays about who does what with fire. So, and they tend to be unique among our thirteen fire departments. So in terms of recreation, it's, uh, we do give for leadership, we give, uh, what we refer to as a standing line item, uh, budget amount. So they don't have to apply for it, it's there for them. Uh, there's also area rates, there's also access to our general tax rate, and recreation, um, in the villages have access to our community grant policy. In terms of probably one of the more important points that'll be coming before you over the next four years relates to infrastructure. And so I tried to do a simple grid here to explain who does what. So in terms of the water utilities in Central Sewer in Aylesford, there is no wa- central water utility, but the municipality does have Central Sewer in Aylesford. In Canning, the village does water while the municipality does wastewater. In Cornwallis Square, there's none, but the municipality does a small portion of the village. Uh, Greenwood, the municipality does both the water and Central Sewer. In Kingston, there is no central water. That is a project that we've been working on with the village to try to see if that can be addressed, uh, while the s- the village itself provides sanitary sewer or wastewater. New Minus, the village does both water and Central Sewer. And Port Williams, again, same as New Minus, handles both their own water and wastewater. So you can see there's a variety. In certain instances, so we're switching now here to the asset management or continuing along at least, in some instances, the municipality purchased services from village, from villages, uh, that are outside of their boundary. So for example, I believe, and I'm going to go to councillor McPherson, but there's probably, I suspect hydrants down towards, uh, Kingsport. And so we, there would be a ratio of the overall number of hydrants, and the municipality would pay for fire protection on our ratio, our percentage of the of the total of hydrants, the ones that are lo- located towards or in Kingsport. Uh, for villages that own their own infrastructure, the municipality offers financial supports. So in the past, we've certainly participated in capital funding. So I'm not going to go into detail, that's going to be part of a a much greater, uh, presentation. Uh, and we guarantee the issuance of long-term debt. So for example, I had a village clerk contact me today looking to do just that. So probably at one of your upcoming meetings very shortly, that'll be coming forward. Uh, and to continue on with asset management, the municipality has been directly involved with the villages regarding asset management planning. Uh, in this, again, that's going to be addressed in a separate presentation. And, um, just very shortly, uh, about that topic, we did hire a consultant and I, we're we're very near completion of, uh, of asset management plans for for the villages. And the whole intent was to understand asset needs and to help the villages with planning for the financing of replacements or enhancements. So, um, I always think of my, mayor's probably tired of me saying this, thinking what my late mother, but my mother would always say, you know, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. So that would be the adage that goes, and not just for the villages, we're doing the same thing. So we have the same things here going on with the municipality. In November of two thousand twenty-two and September of two thousand twenty-four, the municipality met with the villages to introduce a new capital grant program. And again, that's a much more detailed, you're going to hear Director, uh, Barr come up after me and give some presentations on this stuff. So the intent of the work is to identify and prioritize needs and to maximize non-property-based funding opportunities. So how, you know, it's much better that we have third-party funding going into these significant or larger projects than just all property tax, whether it's village property tax or municipal property tax. So we have, uh, the municipality has assisted, uh, the villages in the past, um, in larger applications, and it's actually a very fond memory of mine. We, the last investment in, uh, or I'm sorry, infrastructure, investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, I always just can only think of the acronym, I C I P. We got a, in that particular program, a village was allowed to apply for two, and the municipality was applied for two. So we got together with the villages and said, you know, together, we can apply for seven times two is fourteen plus two is sixteen. So let's do that. So we we work with the villages to, uh, to make a round of applications. Uh, we did apply for the village of Canning and Port Williams and New Minus and Kingston. Some were successful, others were not, but they were all very large projects. Uh, I think the total ask on our part was somewhere in the range of thirty-two million. And it was a competitive program that we had to put our stuff forward. So, uh, that was a good situation where we could bring a team of people together, G I S, our engineers, our accountants. Uh, a bunch of us actually created a bit of a war room, and we spent about a week and a half writing these applications and going back and forth to the villages. The province often asks for a village application to be supported by motion of municipal council. So that is coming up probably at, maybe at your very next meeting. So they've been asked now that have been tabled under a program called Grid. Don't ask me what the acronym stands for because I can't remember, but as part of that provincial program, a village is eligible to apply, but they have to seek a resolution of support from the municipal council, the county council. So in the past, gas tax has been considered part of the federal funding component of an application, and the federal government typically caps the amount of federal funds that can go into any one project. So I don't want to steal the thunder from Director Barr, but that's what this VICE program is about, is to say, let's give you municipal tax dollars as opposed to gas tax dollars, so therefore it's not stackable. So you can use, you can get more federal and provincial funding because it takes it out of that stacking rule. Land use planning, excuse me, per the Municipal Government Act, the municipalities are responsible for land use planning within village boundaries. So villages do not do land use planning. So when the municipality receives a development application and the village owns the infrastructure, the municipality consults with the village to ensure their infrastructure can service the development. So you can kind of see this whole hand in glove thing of what I, hopefully of what I'm trying to say. You need an asset management plan, need to know how you're going to finance that. If you need assistance from us, we need to have, know how to budget for that because in it, it, I'm looking at people around that have more experience than I do, but the the applications in my estimation tend to be a bit different in today's age. We're getting more density, R five type of stuff, which there's greater, there's greater impact on one development on a water system or sewer system. So we have to know that when someone comes in, they're zoned that way, that either the, if the municipality owns it, that we have an asset management plan, we can supply it, or if a village owns the infrastructure, we get confirmation from them that they can supply water and sewer to a development. Really, it used to be a small dot, but it's a much larger dot on our screen now. So summary, uh, villages do not have land use planning authority. Taxpayers can be confused about dual property taxation, mil- uh, between municipal and village tax bills. So again, I hope we can, uh, straighten that out a little bit with some better wording on our bills. Uh, villages own infrastructure that in certain situations impacts planning applications that are filed with the municipality. The municipality is required to guarantee all village issuance of long-term debt. The assets and liabilities of a a village, if it dissolves, are transferred to the municipality in which the village is located. Uh, Kings recently worked with the villages to develop asset management plans, so to identify priorities, cost estimates and financing strategies, and that's going to be addressed by Director Barr. And Kings has developed contracts to replace the present capital funding program intended to maximize external funding opportunities for larger village capital projects. So I'm happy to take, uh, any questions, uh, Mr. Mayor, from yourself or council.
Great. Thank you, Mr. C A O. We have, uh, Director Best.
Thank you, Mayor. Through to, uh, C E O. When you were collecting taxes for the villages, do we charge for that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor, yes, we do.
A percentage or?
A percentage, yes, which is backed up from our accounting staff. It's a proration of the overheads, so for percentage of the of the of the, uh, postage, a percentage for processing the bill, that type of thing. So there's some cost accounting that goes into that.
Thank you.
That's great. Just one, uh, quick comment, uh, Mr. C A O. Uh, I'm certainly, uh, let you know that I'm not getting tired of your, uh, comments that, uh, you know, from your late mother. And in fact, uh, I'm very pleased that you're finally starting to take her advice. Uh, we do, we have a mover for the receipt of the presentation from the C A O. Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by, uh, councillor Gates, and we'll ask everyone to press their button. Thank you, uh, Mr. C A O. And now we shall move on to the next presentation, and we have Director Gregg, uh, back.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to take you through a couple of additional village-related things. One's the asset management project that we've been working on, uh, with them, and then give you an overview of the, uh, capital grant programs, um, that are currently in effect with the villages and a proposed new program. So as, uh, C A O mentioned, um, about a year ago, we went through an external, um, R P request for proposal, um, to have a firm to offer to, um, work with the villages and the municipality to do an overall asset management project with them. Um, we awarded that contract to AIM Network. They've had a a lot of, uh, work in the space within the, within the province. A lot of municipalities have developed their asset management programs with them, and they've done a lot of work in the past with the municipality. So it worked out, uh, quite well that we were able to move into that starting last year, and they've been doing a lot of work over the last year on the project. So these slides will kind of give you an idea of the work that's been happening to date. It's slated to be wrapped up i- in this month. Um, we're getting very close to it, and we've kind of been to final meetings with them, and then we'll have to move into some of the the stuff that I'll outline here in a second. I guess at a high level, what has happened is that when they embarked on the project, and I'll I'll back up just a little bit, we recognized, um, you know, obviously a couple of years ago with some of the extensive growth within the municipality, that we wanted to make sure that the success of the municipality depended on the infrastructure maintenance and investment by not only the municipality, but obviously the seven villages within, um, the County of Kings. And so, uh, a portion of the gas tax funding that was, uh, part of the municipality's portion, I'll explain that program here in a little bit, um, we decided to put towards developing asset management programs, um, for the the seven villages. So when we awarded this contract and they started the work, this is the kind of stuff that the consultant, uh, engaged in in the last, uh, in the last year. They collected a lot of the data that was existing for each village. They worked with the municipality on that, also met with the the village staff to kind of go through any drawings they had, as-built documents, that type of stuff. Um, they conducted site visits, interviewed people that were on the ground, did interviews of the the staff and in, in some cases commissioners. Um, and then they conducted a number of workshops. They had like a level of service workshop. Um, I'll explain a little bit more about that, but they also did like a risk assessment workshop. So they kind of made, especially the the clerks, C A Os of the villages, kind of do a lot of thinking about, you know, what are the level of services expected of our village? What's, uh, level of risk do we want to undertake associated with infrastructure? So it's a lot of thought that goes into some of that, and those workshops kind of helped, um, um, hopefully helped them work through some of that. Um, they also undertook some water and sewer capacity studies. So, uh, you know, some big developments in some of the villages that were projected. So they wanted to, uh, make sure that we did capacity studies on the existing infrastructure. Um, they prepared a draft assessment associated with that, and then back in the summer, there was a presentation made to the commissioners here in council chambers. Um, and then really we're at the final stages of the capital project review. So that's ongoing right now. Um, they're using a lot of the the templates and forms that we have, and we're using some of our staff resources. Um, we have had some turnover in our department a little bit, so, um, it's slowed it down a little bit, but we'll pick this back up and hopefully get it back on track in the upcoming weeks. Um, but that's kind of the the remaining stage with, uh, with that project. So from a to complete point of view, they're going to be working on finalizing, um, their five-year projections and their five-year project plans. Um, and then it'll come up with a proposed infrastructure strategy for each of the seven, uh, villages. They'll prepare a draft report, um, they'll get comments from the villages associated with that, then they'll issue that final report, and then as part of their their work, they're they're going to engage in some public information sessions. Um, and I'll talk, the next two slides here kind of talk about why that's important, um, to kind of engage with the communities once those asset management plans are really developed for the village. So some of these are key messages that came out from the consultant, um, is that over the last number of years, there's been a a focus, um, with our infrastructure in terms of short-term fixes. Um, and really the focus needs to be on more of a long-term planning type approach associated with asset management, that the Band-Aid solutions or fixes to get you through aren't aren't going to cut it. Um, and when you're getting into infrastructure planning, it's not business as usual. So it isn't just continue to maintain things and move on. There's going to be, you know, large, large deficits in the next ten to thirty years associated with infrastructure. A lot of the infrastructure, most of it was originally built many years ago through federal funding, um, or hard pressed, you know, whether it be roads or central services. Um, and there's a lack of really reserves that are there. And we're going to talk a lot about what the municipality does at later presentations around reserve management to kind of help with smoothing of rates and, um, eliminate that shock associated with infrastructure replacement. But there's a lack of reserve funding, and it's evident, you know, by a lot of municipalities, um, not just the seven villages, but that's something that's kind of rampant across the country. Um, and then you're competing obviously with funding demands, whether it be housing, new infrastructure, climate adaptation, there's a lot of, a lot of screaming for different, for, you know, the same dollars in terms of infrastructure management. When you look at the impacts of climate change, so you think about, you know, a six-inch pipe might have did the trick before in a a storm drain, maybe it needs to be bigger now, there's a lot of decreasing reliability from climate change. It's had a big impact on infrastructure planning and infrastructure management. And then in the last five years, most notably is, I mean, we've all been impacted by inflation. Um, municipal services has been significantly too, and they noted that, you know, it's between thirty and eighty percent inflation on a lot of these large contract. Um, some of it is competing with the amount of work that's happening, that you see inflationary pressures that happen there, cost of materials, that type of stuff, um, has had a big impact as it relates to asset management and properly, um, setting up reserves to really fund a lot of this stuff. You'll hear us talk about that reserve management a lot. You look at some of the antiquated type approaches, you kind of see it at, you know, in a water utility perspective, that you're looking at depreciated values, it's being kind of enough to fund your reserves. When you look at the replacement costs of a lot of the assets that are out there now versus when they went in the ground, it's it's not adequate. Um, and we talk about that a lot during our budgeting process, um, as part of our reserve management. So the, uh, the consultant during the discussions with the villages and in the presentation with the commissioners and in what they, uh, kind of preached all the way along is that as you deal with these kind of infrastructure deficit issues over the next, you know, ten to thirty years, you've really got three options. One option is to invest more. So obviously increase revenue associated with paying for the replacement costs that you have to do, or the additional, and, you know, the money has to come from somewheres. So you have to increase that revenue through taxation or other sources, or grants from third parties, that type of stuff. You know, the second option you have is you potentially take on more risk. So what that means is, you know, you've got a pipe that has a life expectancy remaining of 10 years, you try to press that, you go 15 years, you go 20, you take on risk associated with those services. That's an option you have, right? It's not just about more taxation, it's about what are your options moving forward? And then the third one is, do you change the level of service? So that means, you know, maybe not expanding your services, maybe it's not offering, you know, that, that type, like, that's an option. That, so as you go through and you kind of evaluate, how are we going to deal with these infrastructure deficits? That's the kind of lens that, you know, the villages have to have already put into their thinking, it's we do it here at the municipality, but they need to do it as well, and they have as part of the development of these plans, but it's something that's going to be ongoing. Um, my next presentation here will talk about grant funding. We're tying it a lot to these asset management plans. It's not just a one-time exercise of, here's a consultant that does it for you. It's about giving them the tools and the ability for them to look at it, evaluate what their ongoing needs are, place the priorities on how they're going to address it in one of these three prongs of level of service, risk, or, or more funding, um, and set priorities in terms of where they're going to tackle that. It's the only way forward when you're dealing with that kind of potential infrastructure deficit. So the, the solution, um, that the consultant has kind of talked about is, you know, obviously focusing on growth centers is important. So when you're looking at, you know, new builds, you want to free up as much capital as possible for renewal of those assets and for, for new build, and you want to avoid kind of increasing that asset portfolio wherever you can. So a lot of that deals with, you know, looking at density. Um, you hear us talk a lot about that. That's obviously the case when you look at villages and growth centers. If you've got infrastructure in the ground now, make sure you're maximizing that infrastructure before you start, you know, expanding further out. So it's something to think about. And then, you know, grow as a region. Obviously, there's limited investment money that's there, both at the village, the municipal, provincial, federal, everybody's plagued by it. Um, so doing exactly what we're doing, undertaking a consolidated kind of group approach to, uh, investing in these asset management plans and making the best decisions moving forward with it from those plans collectively as seven villages and municipality, funding programs that enable them to be able to do that, that's what he's referring to there, is that we've got to make sure we do it together and, and make sure that we put our limited financial resources to the best place. Focus on core services first, so storm, sewer, water, transportation, it's pretty basic, really, when you think about it, roads and wastewater and sewage and water, um, and it's a basic, the basic items, make sure you focus on those. Build your protective reserve funds, so projections associated with what you think that will be, so you don't have rate shock in future years and have future rate payers paying for the infrastructure that's in the ground now that needs to be replaced now. So build those reserve funds up so that when it comes time to replace it, have the money there to do it. Don't just depend on federal government money to come in and, and save the day. Make sure you plan appropriately, that you're going to have some form of third-party funding, but make sure that you, you're building up those reserves, so that you're not borrowing more and burdening for future taxpayers for infrastructure replacement now. Um, it's a balancing act, you know, there's going to be some borrowing, there's going to be some third-party grants, there's going to be reserve funding, but it's a matter of finding that right balance. And every, every village, every municipality is a little different in terms of their tolerances and where they're able to kind of, uh, um, accept kind of some of those, uh, those pressures in different areas. Um, make sure you align the services with community need and willingness to support through taxes. So that's where that community engagement part is really important when we have these asset management plans, is to take it out and, and talk to each of the villages and show their residents what the impact's going to be. So, you know, I think I can say kind of at a high level, I think the consultant was relatively surprised at where our municipality is. Like, it's not all doom and gloom, there certainly are some pressure points that are there, and some villages are more, um, stressed in that area than others, um, because there's some huge amount of infrastructure. Our consultant talked about how, when you look around, you know, and the villages are the same as every other municipality, and you look at the costs that they're going to be facing over the next number of years, 97 to 98% of it is things you don't see. It's not the buildings, it's not the roads, it's not, I mean, there's no roads that villages have, not even sidewalks, it's the infrastructure in the ground that you don't see that's going to be coming due, and it's the biggest pressure. And, you know, residents don't see that, um, and they don't see the dollar value associated with some of that. So it's a good exercise to show it, and, uh, I know that in the presentation to the commissioners that day, they, um, identified, okay, if you're going to be requiring this much, this is the impact on your, on your tax base. And it's, it can be shocking, so it's going to have to be some decisions obviously made by each village and, and the municipality in terms of how you manage that, using those three prongs I talked about. And so as part of that, obviously educating residents on service levels, cost of service delivery, have the facts and have the information upfront so that everybody's well-informed so they understand that process in terms of proper asset management. So that's, um, the first part of the village presentation, I guess, on asset management. And before I get into the capital grant, I thought I'd just pause for any questions or, or comments you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Councillor McPherson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, through you, I would like to acknowledge and thank, uh, our staff, Mr. Barr and the C A O and staff for forward-thinking, creative thinking. I think this really is a big part of our role in recognizing that, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure here in Kings County, and with inflationary rates, the cost of replacing that is really skyrocketing, and understanding that our infrastructure is also aging. But balancing that with the fact that we are living, uh, within an affordability crisis and high taxation, and I'm not surprised that, uh, some of our residents are now questioning, you know, the dual taxation or perceived dual taxation of living in a village and living within the municipality. People are counting pennies, you know, things are high-priced. At the same time, eventually, not too distant in the future, we're going to be, we're going to be facing these infrastructure issues. So I, I'm really feeling good about the fact that you've made this presentation. It, it's a priority for us, and understanding that solutions won't be easy, and, and the answer isn't always increased taxation, because I'm not convinced that our, in our current economic situation, that our residents can afford too much more of an increase in taxation if any at all. So we need to be looking outside of the box, and we need to be planning for this and finding solutions. And that's going to take a lot of creative thinking, and it's going to take a lot of intelligence. And I feel good about this presentation, that we have people forward-thinking who are at least, uh, thinking 10, 20, 30 years into the future. So just a comment of, uh, satisfaction with that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. You got your light back on again? Does any other members of council have any questions to the director? Okay, I guess that's, that's good then. I'll ask, uh, councillor if someone would like to make a motion in a second to, uh, receive the presentation, please. Okay, councillor Harding, moved, seconded by councillor Lutz. And I'll ask everyone to press their button. Motion carried. Thank you. And now we'll move on to Village Capital Grants Program, and we'll call, uh, Director Greg back up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this part of the presentation deals with the Village Capital Grants Program. So I'm going to take a little bit of time to kind of explain what we're, where we're at now in the history, um, of the grant programs and what we're proposing, um, and that we've met with the villages, and, um, go through some of the details of it without getting too detailed, um, kind of talk about the program at a high level. So right now, um, it's what we would call our existing C C B F sharing program. So you've heard of C C B F term, it's the Canada Community Building Fund, um, it's formerly known as gas tax. And it's a federal funding program that is really administered by the province. So there is a 10-year agreement that is signed by the province with the federal government, and each province is left to their own devices in terms of determining how they're going to distribute that money amongst their municipalities, what the metrics are, and what they're going to do. So for the province of Nova Scotia, I think it's in the ballpark of $50 to $60 million out of that program comes per year. Um, I think it's like over the 10-year agreement, you can do the math on that. For our municipality, it works out to about $2.2 million that comes to the County of Kings, um, on an annual basis. The funding formula associated with that distribution is based on the metric of population, uh, 25% of the allocation is based on that, 25% is based on the number of dwelling units within the, the municipality, and 50% of it is based on expenditure. So they, they have standard expenditures that they compare amongst the different municipalities, population, dwelling units, and you get your allocation. So we're very unique at the municipality of County of Kings from the perspective of sharing that money with the villages. Um, the C A O talked about how we have seven villages out of 21, 22 in the province, so by far and away the most. Um, I've had a lot of other municipalities reach out and talk to us about this program and where we want to head, um, because they have those kind of pressures with their villages as well, like if they have one village or two, um, how they deal with managing infrastructure and how they invest in, um, either sharing gas tax or other grant programs, or what they can do, because a lot of them don't have a set program. They have, you know, come to us with your projects, we'll see if we're able to give you some money. It lacks that structure, and I'm confident in saying that a lot of times it leads to underfunding, because there's a lack of a structure, and when you're competing budget priorities, um, it's hard sometimes to just pass over money for a village priority project if it's not part of a, a structured plan. So this council, councillor McPherson, talked about forward-thinking, this council had forward-thinking, um, obviously 15 years, municipality did 15 years ago, when they passed a motion in March of 2009, it was after hiring a consultant to evaluate how best to, to do this. And the long and short of it is that they had a recommendation around, um, how to go about sharing some of that annual gas tax with the villages. So it was established that you'd look at the historical infrastructure costs related to water and sewer, and allocate that total cost associated with that between, really there's four villages, the seven that have, um, central services that they own, and allocate the costs associated with that infrastructure to allocate the money out to those four villages. In 2009, only two-thirds of the project could be paid using C C B F. So if you had a, a $100,000 project you wanted to do, you could only use $66,000 of C C B F in order to fund it. In 2013, four years later, um, another motion came in front of council that was passed that saw that two-thirds increased to 100%. Villages at the time were talking about how it was difficult to find the balance of the funding associated with that. Um, and then we've talked a lot about stacking, I'm going to talk about it here in a little bit, because it's federal money and from a federal program, if you're getting other federal money in federal program, you'd be restricted from a stacking point of view to whatever the federal requirements would be on that program. So if you're limited to only fund, say, 50% of the project with federal money, gas tax might put you over top of that, you're not able to use the gas tax to kind of make that work from a funding perspective. So there's limitations with it. Um, so it was changed that you could do 100% of your water and sewer using C C B F, and it was made at two-thirds for all the other projects. There's 19 categories under the Community Building Fund of eligibility. Uh, many of them aren't really applicable here within our municipality, but there are 19 different categories that you can use gas tax for. Um, so under that program, the municipality is the one that signs the agreement with the province. We're considered the sole recipient, we're responsible for it. Um, so the village allocations were based on the ratio of water and sewer infrastructure, as I mentioned. So in our municipality, there's four villages, based on the slide that you saw the C A O present, Cannon, Yumnas, Kingston, and Port Williams. They have either water and/or sewer, um, and so they get annual C C B F allocations that go directly to them based on that, that formula. The other three villages, uh, Aylesford, Cornwall Square, and Greenwood, don't own their own infrastructure, so they have to use the remaining portion of the municipalities and basically come to the municipality asking if they can use part of the municipalities' remaining C C B F for their project. So it's a, an annual ask kind of thing, so not a preset allocation in any way. And, and left to the, the sole discretion from the municipality vote to fund any or, or some. With that C C B F program, and I won't go into all the detail of this, but it's a lot of administrative work, um, both for the villages, because what we do is we ask the villages to fill out the information the same way we have to fill it out with the province. We basically take all seven villages' information, and we have to take ownership with it here at the, at the municipality, to submit our reports to the province following their standard reporting templates. Um, so there's like a thing you hear us talk about, capital investment plan, you're going to see one come that's going to include the municipality's information and also the, uh, the village's information. We submit it as if it's the entire village, because we're the ones that are the sole recipients of the funding. So the villages have to replicate everything we do, there's pre-construction reports, we have to do annual expenditure reports, there's signage requirements with C C B F. If you're doing a, you see a lot of these gas tax signs around the municipality or outside of the municipality, it's a requirement to put those up to show that it's federal and provincial and municipal, uh, project. Um, the capital investment plan is an intensive process, you have to identify all the various sources of funding, detail the projects in, um, in detail. They're basically going to evaluate those and make sure that it's an eligible project. Um, you have to submit all of the financial statements, you have to do all the supporting documentations, cash flow projections, funding sources, it's a lot. So that's okay, it's a requirement, it's a lot of fun, money that we get on an annual basis, but when you're doing it with seven different villages as well and putting that on them who are also, um, stressed from that resource perspective, it, it makes it hard. The C C F program obviously has some benefits. It's consistent and predictable funding, um, and supports obviously critical capital projects that we talked about, that there's a great need for that within our municipality. Um, but there are some drawbacks. Um, there really is a lack of municipal-village collaboration on, um, the C I P. We pretty much take the village's C I P, consolidate them with ours, bring them to council, gets approved, um, there isn't a lot of collaboration, um, and we'd like to see that kind of improved to make sure that we're, you know, adhering to the asset management plan. Not all the villages, as I mentioned, receive those preset allocations, they can't plan for it, they can't, um, identify in the coming year what that amount will be, it makes it very difficult. Um, I talked about how there's federal grant stacking restrictions, so that's obviously, that's a huge item in terms of if you're trying to make a project work and you're capped out, that you cannot exceed a certain amount at the federal or provincial level, um, makes potentially C C B F not even usable if you're trying to tap into some other government programs. The meantime, I talked about that. Financial exposure, what I mean by that is that I've always been concerned that the municipality, because we are the sole recipient, you know, do we have some responsibility or onus on us related to eligibility? That if we say, yes, village, this project is applicable under the C C B F, because we've engaged with the province and it seems good, maybe that project comes in a little different than, you know, what might have been presented to the province, and the province comes back and says, whoa, hold on, that's not eligible, because they're only administering it at the provincial level for a federal program, so they got to follow their rules at the federal level. If they see that, okay, no, this doesn't conform with what the federal rules are, well, who pays for that bill? If we're not able to apply C C B F for it, and the villages have already spent the money, um, does that follow the municipality? It's always been something that's been a concern of mine with this program. Luckily, we have, you know, we do our due diligence upfront, the province has been very good at examining the projects, and they've stayed conforming with, you know, what we presented, but, you know, it's a risk, and I don't know the answer to that, about who would be responsible if something went sideways. Um, the village priorities may not be tied to asset management plan, so, you know, I, like I said, the consultant has been happy to see where things are going, there certainly is a lot of improvement to do. I think every village doesn't have like a formal plan, they're going to have one out of this consultant work that we're doing, um, so we're not seeing that tied to. So at the municipality level, when you're looking at, you know, us being owners of the gas tax and really custodians of the gas tax for their municipality, we don't have a clue whether, you know, does this, this project from the village relate to something that supports critical infrastructure or not? Um, and then the categories for C C B F, like I said, there's 19, might not align with the priorities of the village and the municipality. So in summary, the, the current C C F program does have challenges, and we looked at alternative methods that we could do to kind of help minimize those drawbacks and engage, started engaging with the villages on that. So just to kind of look at the timeline, I'm going to move into kind of, you know, that was kind of the frame-up where we were at, um, and where we are right now with the existing program. The rest of this presentation is going to talk about what we're kind of pitching from a, a new program perspective. So in November of 2022, we met with the villages, and we presented to them a concept of a new grant program, um, that would, could be introduced, that would phase out that C C B F sharing program. So since that meeting in 2022, we introduced to the villages, we spent, you know, a better part of 2023 really drafting the agreement. Um, there is a copy of it that is up on the councillor's SharePoint, the secure councillor's SharePoint, for you to be able to look at. Um, it's something that we will discuss in detail, um, for in-camera sessions, because it is obviously a contract negotiation and a contract item, um, but it's there for you to be able to look at, because I'm going to talk about it a little bit at a high level, but you'd be able to look at the agreement in total. Um, but a 20-page agreement that goes into detail exactly how the program would be. We reviewed and updated that at the management level and the staff, we made a number of changes to it to kind of, I think, make it better, um, to kind of align with how the allocation of the funding should happen. We put it out to legal to review back earlier this year, they came back with some recommended changes. We brought it to the previous municipal council back in July of 2024, and then we presented it to the villages at the village meeting in September. So the objectives with that program, we wanted to make sure that we created what we felt was a fair and equitable formula for distribution. I'm going to talk a little bit more about what that program kind of looks like in terms of achieving that outcome. I'm going to talk a little bit more about what that program kind of looks like in terms of achieving that outcome. Um, we wanted to make sure that all the metrics that were in there really kind of helped contribute to coming up with a fair and equitable format across the uh, across the seven villages. We wanted to make sure that sewer and water infrastructure was still very prominent, like I said, villages don't have roads that they have to look after. So when you look at the the critical infrastructure that our consultant mentioned in the asset management, sewer-water still needs to be a prominent factor of it. We wanted to make sure that expenditures were included um in kind of an allocation to kind of look at how best to kind of identify overall activity by the villages, you know, how much are they spending on a, on an annual basis? To kind of gauge the size of it, because not all municipalities have sewer and water, so let's come up with a metric that fits with the municipalities that don't maintain that. So expenditures is one that we wanted to look at. We wanted to make sure that all villages ended up getting a pre-allocation on an annual basis so they could have a set amount to plan on. We wanted to try and reduce administrative burden, that was something that we wanted to to focus on. And then we wanted to uh really maintain that consistent and uh and predictable funding um under a new program. That point is is, you know, the difference between the current program, the CCBF, is that, you know, it's done by council motions. Um, that's it, I mean, another motion of council would end it just as easily as it started it. Um, so we want to put uh agreements in place that would formalize the funding program in greater detail than just a couple of motions at a council and really outline, you know, how you would, you know, if you ended, ever terminated that agreement or modified it or whatever it may be. You know, have it by agreement, so that's even more predictable and more consistent than just operating off of the the council motions. So I just got a couple more slides here, just kind of at a high level of the program, we're talking about setting it up in a five-year term. Um, the allocations will be based on what we establish as five different uh metrics. Um, so we'd have a base and variable amount, first of all, that would relate to whether you had sewer or water infrastructure. And really, quite frankly, that was put in place because when you look at um really the largest village being New Minas, you know, the smallest being Aylesford, there was quite a gap in between those and so creating base amounts kind of helped narrow it up a little bit. Kind of helped bring that consistent funding to comparable to what would have been there from previous, previous uh through the CCF program. So it really helped us kind of narrow it up a little bit, was its sole intention. When you look at the other five metrics, um, historical costs of sewer and water infrastructure, we wanted to allocate twenty-five percent of it to that. And it really kind of reflected the overall, I guess, you know, quantity and value of that infrastructure that's in the ground. Then we added in a metric related to accumulated depreciation of that infrastructure. And what this is, is basically looking at the total um accumulated depreciation, the amount that's been written off of those assets, to use it as a metric to kind of look at age. So it kind of tied into having that infrastructure in the ground, but also, you know, if that number's bigger, you're going to get a higher allocation because your infrastructure is older, you've depreciated it more, you've written a lot more of it off, it's aging, you need the money more. So we built that in there to kind of help reflect, you know, how old is your infrastructure? Um, the expenditures, I talked about that, that we wanted to have a portion of the relate to expenditures, twenty-five percent of it um was allocated. Um, an important point is that we've made sure that to compare apples to apples across all villages, that we wanted to exclude any fire-related expenditures that might be there. Like, fire is supported through an operating grant from the municipality from an operating perspective. And from a capital point of view, it's supported through the area rates that are usually established by the village or the society or the the fire commission. So exclude fire, have it be apples to apples across all the villages. Um, and then we looked at assessment and dwelling units, really we're trying to establish a metric that would show like demand for property-related infrastructure and services, so we use assessment for that. And dwelling was kind of used to be able to say, okay, let's look at the overall demand for residential-related infrastructure and services. So those are the metrics and and they're easily measurable, um, and we would update those on an annual basis. Um, initially we laid out that the grant program would have a total value of a little over a million dollars. Um, very comparable to the previous um programs and the allocations that would have come out of the gas tax funding. So big thing with it is that you could stack it, it'd be a grant from the municipality, so it basically is your money to to utilize and then you'd be able to tack that on to other federal and provincial funding programs. The the categories associated with the eligibility, um, at a high level and the agreement goes into more detail about it relates to sewer, water and and all the work associated with each of those, sidewalks and active transportation, any public amenities and facilities, environmental infrastructure, so there'd be things for stormwater and things related to climate change, undertaking asset management so to help support your ongoing asset management activities. And then there's another, like if there's something that we missed in the program, you can apply to the municipality and get a response on that in terms of whether it works or not. We'd have a period where we'd kind of phase out the CCBF, so you'd have five years to use up the balance of your CCBF. And as part of the program, we want to make sure that you have a village capital enhancement plan, so what's your five-year plan? Have it supported right out of the asset management plan that we've worked with you to to develop and have in place. Have it prioritize, show us what your priorities are, and it would be an element that it would be subject to municipality review. So I don't anticipate that there would be many times that this would have to happen because if you're following the plan, it would be there. But if there's something that seems grossly out of line with the plan, we want to be able to collaborate with the village and go back to them and the agreement talks about that, that wouldn't just be unilaterally by the municipality, but we'd work with you to kind of make sure that we're on the same page from a priority perspective. And be using municipal tax dollars to fund the programs, we want to make sure it aligns and fits with your pre-established asset management plan that the commission has approved. It'd be reimbursement-based programs, so we try and um, it would only be, we'd maintain the funds, pay them out similar to like how CCBF is, but we try and streamline that process, make it less onerous, it wouldn't involve submissions to the province. And we were just basically saying, okay, you've got your established five-year plan, are your your expenses, do they relate to that five-year plan? So the next steps associated with it are really that we're looking to finalize the program agreement. Um, we've had some correspondence with the villages, we would have probably wrapped this up um earlier. Um, but there was some comments that was brought out of the villages, they certainly had some interesting points. We are looking at um, at uh the Tuesday committee of the whole to bring in a request for decision to council in camera because it's a contract negotiation to talk about that item, probably shouldn't have gone into that much detail in open session, but we're going to be doing that. Um, we're going to finalize the program agreement, then we're going to look to execute the agreement with each of the villages. Then we'll work to finalize the forms and documents um that would come associated with this, undertake training with all the village staff and with the municipal staff and look to put the program in place for April one of two thousand and twenty-five. And with that is the conclusion of the capital grants programs that we have with the village and I'm open to any questions.
Great, thank you, Director. Counselor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I recall the villages had put forth a five-year wish list on their uh gas tax allocation for different projects. Is that still going to be phased out or will that be changed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to to Counselor Gates. So they would have five years to utilize CCBF that's already been previously allocated to them. Um, so now the CIP is based on a five-year horizon, so it would align with that. So over that period of time, it would be a combination of using what would have already been previously allocated to them that's sitting there in a bank that they haven't utilized and starting to use the new money that's part of this program. So there'd be a a weird period that we'd have there to kind of make it work, but yeah, it's not a uh, you're going to lose everything that you've banked over the last number of years, you'd have five years to utilize that.
Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mayor, through you, my question is actually quite similar and and I want to talk about the money moving forward. So I understand that you'll have five years to use any accumulated money that hasn't been spent up to date. Will you have five years to accumulate stack money? For example, let's say that a a village wanted to replace a water tank and that's a large expenditure. And the pla, in the planning process, they decide not to use that Canada Capital Grant money for a five-year period in order to save enough money to pay for that. Is it a five-year uh period that you can continue as you move forward?
Right, um, so through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor McPherson, so um, some of those details are, I'm planning to cover in camera because it's part of the specific contract. At a very high level, yes, we established it as a five-year. The villages have identified as part of our meeting that they felt that there's some concerns with that. So we are recommending some alterations and change to hopefully address the concerns that they have.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, out of those eligible um projects on that list for the gas tax, is there one or two that take priority and typically are the number one on the list for the villages, such as like the the four that you mentioned that have their own sewer system? Are they typically applying for this program to uh meet required needs for these sewer systems and it's stopping them from pursuing other projects on that list?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to to Counselor Peckford. So I I think that order of priority probably depends to each, it it really is different from each village to each village. And we'll be really looking at the asset management plan that they would establish in terms of saying, okay, this is a bigger priority for you because you've established it as a priority. So if the villages have looked at their infrastructure and they need to put more money into the sewer um service that they have, then that's a bigger priority, then we'll look at that as being the bigger priority. At the high level, I guess from the municipality's perspective, when you look at the way that they're listed within Schedule B, I would roughly say that that might be at a very high level the biggest priority, looking at critical, high-level infrastructure in the ground type things first, but really it's going to come down to a case by case because some villages are very well-positioned, both from a reserve fund management, from the existing life of some of their assets. Um, I won't go into detail about which ones, but some are are have done an excellent job of positioning themselves. So their priorities might differ from those who are more critical and some of the other more critical infrastructure. So it it depends, kind of the answer, I guess, formally is to what their asset management plans say to them that they need to prioritize.
Okay, great, thank you, Director, and uh we have a motion to uh approve uh receipt and a second or please. For uh moved by Counselor Allen, second by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor signify uh by pressing your button. Okay, motion carried. Now, if council would indulge me to uh move uh item eight B that I mentioned, the Deputy Mayor uh had a present, uh would like to make a motion up to other business. I think it would look, it would uh be a little bit smoother because after that, we would be going into the public uh comment section and then right after that, we'll be going into a closed session and not be coming back into uh committee of the whole. So I think it would run a little smoother if we did that, if uh council agrees, thank you. All right, we'll uh, we'll do that, so we're going to, under other business then, uh, I'll ask the Deputy Mayor, he has a a motion he would like to make.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, I move that um council writes a letter of condolence to the family of Jim Franny. And he was the fire chief of Aylesford and a dedicated firefighter for many years. He passed away recently and just move that we uh show our condolences.
Okay, thank you, and do we have a second or please? Second by Counselor Harding, any further comment? All those in favor signify by pressing your button, please. Motion carried and I want to thank you, Deputy Mayor, that's uh very thoughtful. All right, we'll move on now to uh number eight and I want to welcome all the uh members of the public who attended this uh special committee of the whole. And we're now in the uh public comment part of the evening and if you'd like to come forward to the mic and uh provide your name, your address, and you would be giving a maximum of five minutes to address council.
Sure, hello, my name's Christina Legere and I'm a resident and a lecturer in the municipality of Kings. And I just wanted to first ask, and I'm not sure if it would be a question for you, Mayor, or for the CAO, whether uh the returning officer's report has been filed yet with respect to the municipal election that just passed in October?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, through you to presenter. I can get you, maybe we could, when we break, I can get your number and follow up, I don't have that information right now.
Okay.
Unfortunately, our municipal clerk had to go on personal business.
Yes, I understand, I tried to get it from her today and found she was absent.
I can find out within, I'll find out tomorrow when we can follow up.
Great, thank you. Um, so the other thing is simply that I wanted to put on the council's record um that um, that I and two fellow electors, Patricia Norton and Jeannie Allen filed pursuant to section one fifty-eight of the Municipal Elections Act, a notice of application with the Nova Scotia Supreme Court on November twelfth, twenty-four uh in Kentville, uh questioning the validity, challenging the validity and lawfulness of the recent October twenty-twenty-four municipal election, uh which was conducted solely by electronic methods. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that the application will be heard in chambers on January seventh, uh twenty-twenty-five at two P M. And I also wish to note for the record that um CAO Scott Conrod uh was served personally this evening with the documents, the initiating documents of that proceeding, that legal proceeding. And all of those of you here who are candidates, who were candidates in that election and are now in the seats of the districts, um, that all of you have been served this evening uh with uh personal service of those documents for your information because you're named, you're necessarily under the legislation required to be named respondents, the the legislation requires that. So we've done that and just to let you know that we will be um arranging for the service of all the other candidates um so that they're aware of the proceeding and um and in televote uh will be served as well. And the municipal clerk, the returning officer, the assistant returning officer, they'll all be served, but that's in the document, so please read them and uh and uh I encourage you to seek independent legal advice. The other thing is that um, um, the other thing is that just for your sake, um, I would give my uh my email address so that if you want to, so for the time being, I'm acting as the person you can contact in relation to this proceeding. Um, and so I want to give you my my e-mail address because you may want to um provide me with a better way of serving you future documents because there will be further affidavits filed in this matter. And so my email address is Annapolisah@protonmail.com, it's not on the document, it should have been there. Um, so if you want to speak with me, um, or if if you just want to let me know a better address to reach you out for future service, then that would be a way to do it. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council?
Sharon Pat Atwell, I live on Ridge Road. I would just like to say the information I received here was very useful. And I would like to know if it's available publicly in a hard copy, all of it, all the presentations that were given this evening or online so that they can be printed off.
Thank you, to the mayor. To Ms. Atwell, yes, they will be online, we'll be posting them shortly.
So how do I access that information?
Uh, we'll, we'll put a link right on the banner on the main page for a period of time.
Okay.
And then there'll be links to follow to get to that specific page.
Can you give me a brief description as to what the heading might be?
Yes.
That I should look for, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public? Uh, I'm sorry, you've already had your your chance, uh, thank you. We're looking if somebody else would first would like to come forward, thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to come forward? No, I guess no one else is coming, so you're, you're welcome to come back now. You're, yeah, it's just, I I, I like to give, be fair and if everybody hasn't had a chance, we, we like to.
I just wanted to ask who the solicitor for the uh municipality is at this time, because I will arrange for service on that person for the, for the municipality itself.
Well, solicitor is Peter Rogers with McGinnis Cooper.
Okay, thank you. And also I would just ask that uh, that all information, communication, data and documents pertaining to that recent election be preserved. And the data, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, what I would like to do now is uh, uh, we would, I'd like to entertain a motion that we uh, uh, have a five-minute recess and uh, uh, returning from that, that we would go into a closed session of council and we will not be coming. session of council, and we will not be coming back into a open council meeting. Moved by Councillor Gates, second by Councillor Lutz. All those in favor, please press your button. Okay, motion carried. Thank all those who attended, and we'll now have a five-